Excellent, gentlemen, all of us are here. Let's go ahead and start. We'll look at the sign in sheet in a second. I want to thank everybody for being here. We will call this meeting to order 7:00 PM on today, December 15th, a special zoning commission meeting. I would need a roll call, please.
Skip McCormick's here.
Commissioner.
I'm sorry.
Commissioner McCormick?
Yes.
Commissioner Bueller?
Here.
Commissioner Hernan? And Commissioner Jackson?
Here.
Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you, appreciate everybody. At this time, we'll go ahead and go into the the public hearing, the first public hearing. Let me read the title, public hearing number one on the minimum lot area as set out in section 50-64D of the Castle Hills Code of Ordinances. The meeting is now open. I do have a few people that are scheduled to speak. We'll go ahead and start off with Quentin Baker.
Good evening, zoning commission. Quentin Baker, 213 Hibiscus Lane, here to speak in favor of having a minimum lot size of one acre. Several things to point out. I wish we actually could do the rural districts first because we have a long presentation at all seats. But at this point, at this time, the average is already rapidly provided for the lot size and all the.
Mr. Baker, I apologize. We have somebody, I think it's Mr. Gore, who has is on the live stream and needs to turn his mic off. It's interrupting your speech. Okay, let's try again, I guess.
All right, let's resume then. As mentioned, the lot size, the average lot size in the proposed area is already about one acre. Mr. Rappley provided too many statistics on the lot sizes for each of the streets that are west of West Avenue. And I'd like to go through them with you briefly. For West Castle Lane, the average lot size is .963 acres, just a touch under one acre. South Winston is actually the smallest of them, .737 acres. Fox Hall Lane, 1.136 acres, average size. Hibiscus Lane, 2.3 acres. Now, our property is the outlier in this whole population with 27 acres. So if you remove us from that statistic, the average on Hibiscus is .913. And for Fox Hall Cove, .952. So in essence, the proposed one acre is right in line with the averages for our neighborhood. Also want to remind you all that in the 1997 city's comprehensive plan, back in 97, for this area, they termed Zone One, there was a recommendation of a minimum of one acre for any subdivisions of property. So we're back to our comprehensive plan put in place in 1997. Back then, they recognized a desire to keep large lot sizes. All right. And to go on, we've been up here before city council and zoning a number of times because of developers coming in and trying to cut up properties into small areas, including a PUD with 16 houses on 4.5 acres. A current issue of a replat or zoning issue of five houses on 1.1 acres at 101 Hibiscus, all right, and other instances. The minimum one acre lot size would really help avoid a lot of consternation and conflict in the city by avoiding these proposed subdivisions into small lots. So strongly support this minimum of one acre. Thank you very much.
Mr. Baker, before you leave.
Yes, go ahead.
Your permission, Mr. Chairman. I have some confusion here that I think needs to be cleared up.
Please proceed.
I believe there's some confusion here that needs to be cleared up. Mr. Baker is obviously talking about the Area One. Is that right, Mr. Baker? You're talking just about Area One?
I was. Is that not what the agenda topic is?
The agenda topic is just minimum lot size period throughout the Castle Hills. So it could be applicable, but it's not just about Area One.
I see. I did not realize that, but my comments still pertain to the whole city.
That is correct.
Other areas of the city for which there be small divisions, I would also encourage us not to be subdividing down any further.
I got you. Mr. McCormick, does that help you with your?
Well, it does to some degree. I think that Mr. Baker's comments are most germane to the second subject this evening. And we're talking about the area, the rural area west of West.
That is correct. This is just a minimum lot. So in essence, it's a little, it's a little over, but it's still acceptable.
Well, I didn't think it was not acceptable. It's just that I wanted to clear up as to what Mr. Baker was addressing himself to and point out that we'll be addressing this further in the section pertaining to the zoning, the rural area zoning west of West.
That is correct. On the next on the agenda, I have Mrs. Jana Baker. Oh, no, excuse me, she's on item four. I'll go to Stephen, Stephen Ackley, Ms. Dr. Ackley.
Stephen Ackley, 118 West Castle Lane. Thank you, Chairman. Although Mr. Baker has pointed out that the the problem of the minimum lot size of one third of an acre, 14,000 square feet, is particularly egregious in Zone One. I feel that, you know, throughout Castle Hills, we've seen that all the minimum lot sizes, all the average lot sizes are actually much greater than that. And varying, of course, across the five zones. So I'm in favor of a minimum lot size designation for each of the areas that's more compatible with the lot sizes that are in those areas at this particular time. There's no doubt that we can point out to several features of our zone and Zone One, where this has been tried to breach in a number of different ways. But I think it also relates to the other neighborhoods of Castle Hills, that they should be protected as well. And the minimum lot size of one third of an acre is not compatible with what's there. If any new construction comes in, I think it should conform more exactly to the average lot size in those areas. And I think it's a positive that rather than to speak at a zoning commission hearing finally, where we are advocating for a positive change in this rather than trying to fight some other difficulty. And I think this would be in favor of the residences of Castle Hills to make this change and compatible with their neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Peter Bella, please.
Hello, Mr. Chairman and Commission. Thank you very much for holding this special hearing tonight. I'm Peter Bella, 110 Hibiscus. I'm in favor of the one acre lot size minimum. And it's understood that a lot of areas, a lot of existing properties are smaller than one acre. And one, no doubt, they wish they could be one acre. I think that as a general system, the concept of one acre is fair enough. And they would, of course, be grandfathered in. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Bella, Mr. Chairman, I have a question with regard to Mr. Bella's comment.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead. Skip, you put yourself back on mute.
Or is my response so good that I've already answered the question? Mr. McCormick?
Give him a couple of seconds.
Mr. Bella, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir, I can.
I'm inquiring as to whether your comment about the one acre lot size pertains to the area west of West Avenue. I assume it doesn't pertain to the areas where we already have substantial lot sizes less than an acre.
I don't understand whether the proposal is for multiple areas. In other words, again, with the rural residential district, which is the next agenda item, there was a zoning map that showed a number of different areas of the city with different typical lot sizes within those areas. In saying one acre, I was simply saying that that would be for the entire city because it's not clear to me. It was not clear to me how the zoning commission intended to treat those other areas if they did decide to think in terms of different lot sizes for different areas.
Well, my concern is that it appears to me that most of the areas in the city already have lot sizes substantially smaller than an acre, except for the area west of West Avenue. And that we're having two hearings tonight. One of them is with regarding the section 50-64, which pertains to the A residential area. And all of these areas are marked out on the map that you have in your packet or in the packet that was published. And you see, most of them have areas substantially less than acre, except for the area west of West Avenue, which is the second topic on the agenda tonight. So I'm assuming that you're in favor of one acre lots in the area west of West Avenue. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
We'll continue with the public hearing. Mrs. Ackley.
Good evening, Mr. Solis and zoning commissioners. Thank you for holding this hearing for us to speak our thoughts. This agenda item is regarding the section 50-64D of the Castle Hills Code of Ordinances, which I looked up. It seemed to me I should know what is there already before we make proposals to make a change. And what I see there already is that the minimum lot size for all lot sizes in whatever area of this wonderful map that Mr. Rappley has prepared for us is stated to be 14,000 square feet, which is just under one third of an acre. Just as we learned in the military, your standing operator procedure should say what you're going to do. You should do what's in your standing operating procedure. And your inspectability shows that you have documents that show that you did do what's in your standing operating procedure. Clearly, this ordinance needs to be updated, especially as regards to the area west of West Avenue, which on Mr. Rappley's map is indicated as Area One. Because the minimum lot size for that area has never been and is not 14,000 square feet in the sense that the vast majority of homes in that area are on septic tanks. And by the county's own demand, one must have at least a half an acre of property to have a septic tank. And that should be further modified to remind folks that the county does not allow you to include setbacks in that. So as Mr. Lewis found out when he subdivided his plat on Hibiscus, he couldn't cut his parcel into .5 acre spots. He had to make them more like .55. And as the Castle Hills Church School has found, as they put acreage on for sale over on Danny Lane, those acres are all listed as 0.57 acres because they have figured out also that to be on septic tank, you have to have half an acre plus, plus enough land to account for the setbacks. And as you can imagine, any lot in Castle Hills could be of various shapes. And if you're on a corner, then your entire long arm on the side street has a wider setback. So setbacks will vary depending on the shape of the lot, the position, whether they're in a corner or not, maybe even whether they've got a drainage easement going through them. So I suggest we not parse the second decimal place, but just suggest that at the very minimum, a lot west of West Avenue would have to be 0.6 because you have to have enough for a septic tank and setbacks. So my main point here is to say, yes, this ordinance needs to be updated. And I speak specifically for the area of west of West Avenue. What I would like to see is in a minimum area of closer to one acre, which is where homes are now. Mr. Rappley's good math shows that the current average lot size is 1.29 acres in that area. But Mr. Baker has pointed out how that does vary on the different lanes and whether you include the largest parcel or not in the average. I could suggest minimum lot size for the other areas, but I don't live there anymore. I used to live in the estates. And our lot was 0.8 acres where the average is 0.6. So I think probably the average stated for each could be suggested as a minimum lot size. But I live in Area One, so I will speak to Area One. And I would like to see a minimum lot size of one acre, but absolutely must update this ordinance, which does not correlate with reality because of the septic tank situation over there. And let me just mention a little bit more about the septic tank situation. The area west of West Avenue has been a miracle of historical development. The area was mostly little hunting lodges and maybe a few neighbors. So a very sparsely settled area with huge grounds, few homes, narrow lanes. And because there's abundant grass and tree area in this region, which would absorb rain and save anyone from rapid runoff falling a rain, there was no need for drainage culverts to be put in. Because there was low traffic, there was no need for wider roads to be put in. And people just kept their septic tanks and put up with them and updated them as needed be. Well, to change things to a smaller lot over in that side of the town would necessitate the input of infrastructure. And I'm afraid that would, at least in part, fall to the city of Castle Hills, a big expenditure to widen roads, to place storm drainage culverts, and maybe to bring in sanitary sewer lines. So it would be not only an advantage to the residents who live there and the people who don't live there, but who come in there to do their biking and their hiking and all the students from Antonian and from the Castle Hills Christian School, who train their track team up and down our little lanes because it's cool in the summer with all the trees that expire oxygen and water vapor. And it's safe because of the low traffic load. It'd be advantageous to the city proper and to the city residents from whatever area they live in to maintain this large, lauded, low-density, low-traffic area. So thank you for listening to me. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you. I believe I have a Ms. Moody. Please come to the mic.
I just want to, I live on 303 Fox Hall Lane. And I've been there 27, 28 years. And I just agree with my team behind me that we just kind of need to keep it a little bit the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Martinez, you were scheduled to speak in reference to public hearing number one on the minimum lot size area asset out in section 50-64D of the Castle Hills Code of Ordinances. Your thoughts?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity. Really, I just, I live at 105 Hibiscus. I live in the area. That's probably going to be one of the most impacted parts of Castle Hills when it comes to lot sizes, especially when you look at, you know, the history and the makeup of this area. I really feel that in order to keep the uniqueness of the neighborhood, it really, really benefits both the city and the neighborhood to keep the lot sizes to, you know, if not one acre, something close, very close to that, given the makeup of the surrounding area and the fact that there's no sidewalks. The lanes are really narrow. The history of the area, when you look at, and I know this has been repeated, but just the history of the area, the age of the homes, it would really disrupt the characteristics of the neighborhood. And I think that's why it's really so important to keep the neighborhood as it is and to help it move forward. And carving up every lot is not what's going to make this neighborhood any better, especially when you consider most people there, there's lots of kids. Most people are walking in the area. You've got the track kids running through, not just from Antonian, but also from the Castle Hills Church in that area. So you've got a lot of different, unique things about the neighborhood that it really would be who the city to keep them as it is. And the only way to do that is really to limit the lot size in that area. So thank you for that.
Thank you very much. I appreciate everybody. The, are there anybody else here in the chamber that would like to speak in reference to the public hearing on the minimum lot area as set out in section 50-64D of the Castle Hills Code of Ordinances? Seeing no one else, then I will close the public hearing at 7:20 PM. Have that noted. At this point, we'll go on to item number three. Discussion on a recommendation of the city council on the minimum lot area as set out in section 50-64D of the City Castle Hills Code of Ordinances. We have several members on. And I think at this point, Ryan is going to make a presentation.
Okay, thank you, Chairman. Just for the benefit of the zoning commission, I have put together a few slides, obviously here for 50-64, and then have a kind of a bigger view of the map that we've been speaking of with the five geographic areas. Just some background, the city council requested the zoning commission to review the minimum lot size. 50-64 area regulations, minimum lot area. All building lots in this district shall contain not less than 14,000 square feet, only applicable to zoning District A. For this exercise for the zoning commission, we divided five geographic areas and determined the average lot size per square feet and acre size. I know this looks a little condensed. It's in your packet, but it shows the five areas. And I know it's a little hard to read, and I'll go to the next slide. But it shows the outline of the five areas that were designated and then the lot size itself. This is just the basic view of our zoning map. And then these five areas divided. And then obviously, as you look, section one, 56,070 square foot, 1.29 acres. Section two, 21,769.50 acres. Section three, 26,206.89 square feet, .60 acres. Section four, 23,074 square feet, .53 acres. And then section five, 18,157, 46 square feet, .42. And then, if you'd like, I can go back to show the map there again to reinstate, to re-show the five areas. Again, this is just what we put together so we can provide the zoning commission how these lot sizes look in different areas of Castle Hills. And so I just want to give this background to you all as a zoning commission to help either make a new recommendation to city council or determine if the current lot size is appropriate for Castle Hills. Chairman?
Yes, I appreciate it. Let me, let me tell you where I stand on this issue. Quite honestly, I see it, you know, I believe in small government, and there are times for large government. In my estimation, this is nothing more than large government. And I don't know if we need to be visiting this. I don't see the impetus. To me, there is no other citizens here except for those that have a vested interest in a rural community and a rural residential designation, which comes along with the minimum lot size. What I don't understand is there's no other public demand for this. I don't know where the city council got the initiative for us to spring it to us. I quite honestly have not hit anybody talk in reference except for that rural residential area, which we will discuss in the next item on the agenda. So from my perspective, you know, this is public hearing number one, but we hear no other part of this community coming forward seeking this type of remedy for themselves or for their section of Castle Hills. So therefore, I'm willing to do the two public hearings that we have asked for to do, but I don't see where the demand is at for this type of activities. Let's say other members of the zoning commission.
Mr. Chairman?
Walter Bueller?
Yes, sir.
Sorry, Walter Bueller. I don't, I guess I just don't understand. My lot on Prince is roughly 20,000 square feet less with the, I guess, setbacks. If my, if we designate a minimum lot or suggest or a lot size of 25,000 square feet, if my house burns down, would I have to get a zoning variance to rebuild my house?
Mark, would you like to answer that?
The answer is probably, I would need to look and see what the rule is, Mr. Bueller, but these structures are grandfathered.
But my house is burned. It's gone. It's to the ground.
Right, exactly.
So yes, hurricane came by, tornado, God forbid, comes by. My, it's often Oz. Yeah, sitting on somebody, on a witch. You know, I.
You're, I believe.
Yeah, if the structure is 50% or more damaged or destroyed, then it has to comply with the existing ordinance, ordinance existing at the time of the event. So in your example, you would have a problem rebuilding without, as Mr. Solis indicated, getting a variance from the zoning commission. Excuse me, a variance from the Board of Adjustment.
Board of Adjustment.
Would, I think, meet the minimum requirements for a variance since this was something not under your control.
Sure, but I'm at their whim.
created by you and does create a hardship. But the Board of Adjustment has its own vehicles and own decision-making. And it's a high burden because to get approval from the Board of Adjustment, which is a five-member board, you need four affirmative votes. You lose before the Board of Adjustment. If you think you won with three to two, you lose because the statute requires four affirmative votes for approval of variances by the Board of Adjustment. So it is a very high standard. And I think your comment and your question really illustrates something that Mr. Solis said a few moments ago, which is he doesn't hear the outcry from other parts of the community that this is needed. And I think your example is something that is important for the zoning commission to consider.
Absolutely. And Walter, if I can, you illustrated exactly, I believe the root of this whole minimum lot size has to do and is connected to the RR residential area. And somehow it migrated to everything else. I think they're separate, but this is a public hearing. So please continue.
Sure, but that was my thought and my concern for, for not just me, but for my immediate neighbors, that we would be facing ARB and then ultimately, you know, barring anything, district and appeals courts to, 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 to rebuild. Yeah. All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Skip, I believe you were ready to speak. Commissioner.
I had a thought with regard to the complexity that we're imposing on the whole, the whole lot size issue. The problem is that our current lot sizes are not uniform. And when we look at that acre 29 over in Area One, I don't know on face of it whether that includes the 27 acres that Mr. and Ms. Baker own or not. But if it does, then that lot size is deceptive. If it doesn't, then we still have the issue of the fact that many of those lots in that area are .6 or .7. in that area are point six or point seven. The other thing is that in the area east of Northwest Military and South Mountain, we have houses, a number of houses that are on septic systems. And if we put a lot size of, say, point four or something like that, which might not comport with the county regulations for septic systems or the state's regulations for septic systems, then all of those people would be in exactly the same boat if something happened to their house and they had to apply for a permit to rebuild on a lot that no longer meets the minimum standards for having a septic system. And then they wind up having to put in an expensive commercial system or a hook up to the, to a utility sewer service. I think those are things that we don't necessarily want to do. And it appears to me that the major problem that has been, that we've been looking at has been the area west of West Avenue where the lot sizes are already pretty, pretty large. Although a number of those lots are less than an acre as it is. And if something happened to one of those houses, they'd be faced with the same issue of rebuilding. So I'm not so much in favor of changing the lot size as I am in favor of changing the regulations with regard to special uses in the, in the rural area. Most of the complaints that I heard the other day were with regard to people coming in, putting in schools or wanting to do some other kind of commercial building over there. And I think that we can deal with that by special, by special use permit or limiting special uses rather than by limiting lot size. A limiting lot size, I see, I understand the reasons for it. And I think that unless we want to go and write an ordinance that specifies a lot size for every, every house in the district, I think we've got a problem.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other commissioners who would like to speak to this topic? This is the first of the public hearings. We will have another public hearing on the minimum lot size. And just in conclusion, let me tell you, I go back to what I said earlier about small government and big government. There is a time for either one. I define this as big government and unnecessary government to tell people what they can or cannot do after they purchase their home. When it comes to the area, I cannot, but my gut tells me this, the root of this started with the RR designation. In my estimation, it should stay with the RR designation and let us have the debate there. To openly apply it to all the other areas was a mistake and a misdirection. But this is a public hearing, it's the first one. We got to say our thoughts and we'll move on. So if there's any other discussion, see no discussion. We're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is item number four.
Chairman, the second public hearing for that will be on the regular January fifth meeting.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I have, I have a motion to dispose of this agenda item. I think we have to respond to the council's request for a recommendation one way or the other. So I'd like to move that we recommend no change currently to fifty dash sixty-four.
I think we're, sure, we have to have the hearing.
Skip, we have one more public hearing to go to, Skip, before we do that motion.
Chairman, I'm not following you. You have to do what?
We have one more scheduled public hearing for the ordinance that we were just talking about, the, the modification, the minimum lot size. We, we said we'd have two public hearings. The next one is scheduled for January the fifth.
We have another public hearing on item, on item two?
On, yes, we're required to.
Okay. Never mind.
Plus you cannot take action tonight. That's not the way it's styled on the agenda either.
So we will continue. And we have the next public, excuse me, the second public hearing on the minimum lot side is January the fifth. And at that point, we'll have an action item after that one, Skip. Does that help you?
I'm with it.
Thank you, sir. And then we'll go on to item number four. So public hearing, the time is seven thirty-four. Public hearing number two, on whether to recommend to the city council amendments to the zoning ordinance to create RR, Rural Residential Zoning District, to include the use, building area, height, area, construction material, fencing, vehicle parking and storage and other regulations for RR residential district. Public hearing is open. Believe we have several speakers, but we're going to use one speaker and represent to everybody else. Is that still the agenda, Mr. Quentin? Mr. Baker, you have a presentation to make to us?
This is Quentin Baker. Yes, I have a presentation that a group of us put together. I can't say it's everybody who signed up on the list, but there are seven of us who have combined into a single presentation.
Love it. Let's do it.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for allowing us to do this group presentation. I hope it'll be more cohesive and smooth for everyone. Very good. Thank you. Can everyone see online and hear the, the presentation? Are we good to go?
Chairman, can everyone see it on the, on the line?
Sir, I can see it well.
All right, well, let's, let's proceed ahead. The citizens who are contributing to this presentation, myself, Peter Bella, Stephen Ackley, Jackie Ackley, Terry Worth, Abel Martinez and Wayne Carter. All except Wayne Carter are present tonight. Wayne is out of town. So take this as a team presentation, please.
Thank you, sir.
Right. We, in the last public hearing, talked quite a bit about the aesthetics of the proposed rural district. We're not going to repeat that tonight, just for the sake of everyone's time. We won't go down that road again. We'll simply ask the zoning commission to please keep in mind the beauty and the aesthetics of this particular area and the very strong pleas we had from the citizens in the last meeting to preserve this particular area. All right? So let's go on to new topics and let's start by addressing the heritage of the proposed rural district area. For those who aren't aware, this area actually developed before the city of Castle Hills Incorporated. This is an old area, but we know Fox Hall Lane dates back to nineteen twenties and was fox hunting lodges when it first came into being. As, and the neighborhoods, neighboring streets right around it, similarly were just country cottages out well away from the city of San Antonio. So it's a rural area and we know, we know of the fox hunting lodges. Our first property on, on Fox Hall had one of those fox hunting lodges when we bought the property. And then that result was a rural setting. We have narrow lanes, there were water wells, septic systems, which still exist today to characterize this particular area. And so west of west quite remarkably retains its rural roots. Well, that heritage leads to three fundamental issues that I want you all to keep in mind for this area. Narrow lanes, lack of stormwater infrastructure and no sanitary sewers. We're going to talk about each of these in the next few slides. But there are, there are fundamental issues here for the city, life safety issues, property damage issues and, and simply requirements to meet county for the sanitary sewer. So let's talk first about the narrow lanes. It's generally characterized, they're about twenty feet wide. In some parts of the area, that's a generous twenty feet. It's certainly not twenty feet everywhere because the edge of the road is eroded off. And, and it's less than that in many places where you really have to crawl partway off the road for two cars to pass. All right? No shoulders, no sidewalks, no curbs. And there's really insufficient room for on-street parking. If one car parks on the street, you're limited to maybe a lane left for other cars to park, certainly not two-way traffic. So the net result is cars that park along these streets have to park partially or completely off the pavement in the front yards of the properties. That's just the reality of living in the rural area. That's what we all live with. Okay? If a car does park on the street, why, it just chokes flow. And then, you know, everybody's got to navigate around the car that's, that's very rudely parking in the middle of the street, right? We, we do benefit from the current low traffic density, which does make it safe for walking, running, biking, high school students jogging. Okay? It's compatible with the neighborhood and, and it's good for everyone. But quite frankly, the area can't tolerate any increased traffic, which would be associated from increased housing or other development. It creates pedestrian hazards. We'd get increased deterioration of the road surface. And quite frankly, the city would face increased costs. We already have a road maintenance problem. It just exacerbate that problem. Let's go to the stormwater situation. This area does not have stormwater infrastructure. There are no stormwater drains. There are no underground stormwater sewers. There are no stormwater culverts. They just don't exist. They were never developed. The large lots though are of benefit here. The open land serves as a mitigator for rainwater runoff. It slows water flow over the land and absorbs a lot of water. So it really is necessary that we keep the large open areas to prevent any increase in stormwater runoff. Now I do have to point out, we already have a flooding problem in that area. There are times when residents along West Castle, Fox Hall and Hibiscus have all experienced flooding. Our own house, three oh four Fox Hall is one example. So the area really has no capacity to take any increase in stormwater runoff. We're, we're already past the limit when we get high, high rains. And to point that out, let me give you two case histories. The Castle Hills First Baptist Church parking. Because of the development of the church and the paving of their parking lots, that became a source of rainwater runoff that contributes to that flooding. It starts in their parking lot, goes down to West Castle Lane, crosses through private properties to Fox Hall, then to Hibiscus and finally down past properties on Fox Hall down to Antonian. That flooding all occurs just because of the addition of the impervious cover to the Castle Hills Church parking lot. That alone. Now there's another case, fortunately it didn't come to pass, the one oh one Hibiscus PUD. That was basically four point six acres that was proposed to be sixteen residences. Well, putting sixteen residences meant a lot of impervious cover. The engineering, excuse me, the engineering studies that were performed and associated with that PUD really pointed out the increased runoff and that the issues from that runoff was one of the major reasons that that PUD was denied. It can't handle the water. But just bear in mind that if we put in denser housing, there's ramifications for the city and potentially in form of the cost to add stormwater infrastructure. Average lot size is shown on this slide while I covered it previously, so I don't want to retread old ground. We've already said from the Mr. Rapley's slide that the average acreage is one point two nine acres in the area. But it already is a large lot size, which we need to maintain. So for the city, there is an impact for going to higher density housing. We, we'd have to address the streets in some fashion. There's a need for parking, there's emergency services and then the ramifications of higher traffic with, in terms of road maintenance. We have the issue of potential need for stormwater infrastructure and the possible need for sanitary sewer. Recall the basis school project that was proposed for South Winston? That would have required a sewage pumping system to pump sewage uphill to the sewer main on, on Northwest Military Highway. So that's an example of the kind of sewer impact we might have. Now, going back in history, I mentioned previously that we have our nineteen ninety-seven comprehensive plan. And in that plan, it already addressed this Zone One, which they termed the west of West Avenue. And a couple of, several quotes are included in this slide. The first is replating of multi-acre lots be restricted, resulting in lot sizes of no less than one acre. No rezoning to multifamily. The southwest zone is floodplain to the railroad tracks and should be left in its natural state. And that's, that's the west side of McGimsey Park, two thirteen Hibiscus and the Fox Hall Cove residence is that whole stretch of land that is really the Almous Creek. All right? That comprehensive plan also mentions natural resources. So quoting again, preservation of natural resources is a priority in city planning. And secondly, the city of Castle Hills to work with neighborhood groups to develop ordinances which improve and maintain environmental standards for neighborhoods and open spaces. So reading all of this, our proposed rural district is really a proactive move that meets the intent of the nineteen ninety-seven comprehensive plan. It's taken us quite a while to get there, but quite frankly, it's in line with what our planners envisioned back then.
Mr. Baker, I just want to interrupt you for a second. Can you tell us the status of that nineteen ninety-seven comprehensive plan? Was it adopted by council? Was it accepted by the zoning commission? What happened to it?
It was adopted by city council. It was actually, when it was drafted, it was called a master plan. But when it was actually adopted in city council vote, and I, I have that record in, in my computer and I can get it for you, it was renamed a comprehensive plan when city council voted it in.
So.
It adopted.
Was it, was it then incorporated into zoning rules, regulations, or this is just somewhere written that you pull out of your hat every so often to remind people?
I do not know if it ever made it into zoning actions. What we do know is that the city council voted to adopt this comprehensive plan. That was in nineteen ninety-seven.
Thank you. I apologize.
Okay.
Please continue.
Was there another question?
No, sir.
All right. I do also want to point out that by adding the rural district, hopefully we can avoid conflict. This area that is the proposed rural district has been the subject of numerous attempts at special use permits and subdivisions and replating. I've listed here eleven different times that we know of when there have been attempts that have come before zoning and city council to subdivide the land. There's been a lot of city resources devoted to these efforts. There's been expense associated with engineering studies and legal costs. And there's been litigation. Our hope is with the rural district now conveying the intent for this area that it would benefit the city and the citizens by avoiding conflict and not consuming our city resources. Now, another point is the value of the city. Developers have come up and said, well, it benefits the city to, to cut up these properties, put higher density housing on and increase our tax base. We want to tell you the value of the properties are going up organically. There are a total of ninety-two occupied structures. Of them, thirty-seven of the properties either have renovations going on or new houses being built. It's just the attractiveness of the area alone is developing investment in it. So the area is improving for their Castle Hills faster than any other area. And the city is benefiting from the increase in value of the properties. They drive around the streets and then you can see the investment that individuals have put into the properties and the beauty of the properties. All right. Lastly, in closing, I want to show you the neighborhood support. A petition has been circulated among the residents of the streets that are proposed for the rural district. It reads, the underside residents request the streets of South Winston, West Castle, Hibiscus, Fox Hall and Fox Hall Cove be designated in the zoning ordinance of Castle Hills as a rural residential. with a minimum lot size of one acre. Existing lots of sub-acre size would be grandfathered at their present size. Well, as of today, more than fifty percent of the residents in the area have signed this petition. I just want to make you make you aware of the broad support that is that exists in this area for this rural district. I think that that's all I have. Let me talk to my or turn to my colleagues and ask them if I missed anything, just to double check. Okay, thank you for the reminder. As Mr. Bell pointed out, we wanted to mention to you that the floodwaters, the stormwater situation, besides being in this rural district, it drains into the area behind Antonian, which goes to this church, Mary Magdalene Ball Field and Aggie Park. Okay? That area is already at or beyond its capacity for stormwater runoff. We've seen that in flooding in the area. The Aggie Park Clubhouse has flooded at least three times that I'm aware of and had to be rebuilt. So just if there's more development, it's not just this rural district that gets impacted. It flows down to then these other properties and the schools and Aggie Park are going to receive the brunt of it. And that becomes the stormwater infrastructure issue that the city would inherit. So bear in mind, we have a downstream issue too. Alright, I think that wraps it up for our team presentation. Thank you all very much for hearing us. We sure hope you'll support this.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else? Mr. Martinez, you were part of this group and I think Moody, are you part of this group also? Are you? So that we're done? Just want to confirm.
We have Chairman, we have Ms. Baker who would like to speak and then
Come on forward.
Thank you. I do agree with everything that the committee came up with, but I did receive a a text from a zoning board member who asked for Claire, oh, I'm sorry, I'm Jana Baker, two thirteen Hibiscus Lane, that asked for clarification on how special uses would be handled within the rural residential district overlay. And the way I understand rural residential overlays is that yes, they do typically allow for special use permitting or special uses, but they have a built-in level of approval and scrutiny. And typically that results back to goes back to the city staff and the council to make those determinations. But the rural residential district does have special parameters that limit and set restrictions preferably on lot sizes and special use permits on what you can do with it. I think we can avoid the problems that would be brought out in code section fifty dash four nine seven dealing with special uses. If we limited it to single-family Zone A, single-family residential properties only. And the single-family rural district could limit, it could possibly limit short-term rentals. It could possibly impact home occupations. But the way I understood what the zoning board has already done is it would not impact either of those, but those are conceptually things that could be affected. But I think our code is already pretty pretty stout on those both of those issues. Should the rural residential district overlay be approved, it should be stated that grandfathered non-conforming lot sizes still need to comply with the rural residential zoning restrictions. With respect to terms under code fifty four nine six on definitions and purposes of special uses, those that code language would still apply, but it would be limited by expressly restricting special use permits within the Zone A residential lots within the residential rural district. So I hope that wasn't too confusing. I do think that we would need to amend code four nine seven and limit special uses within the rural residential Zone A.
Yeah, and just to clarify, special use permits are part of an avenue that is available to any citizen to come forward and request. So it's a checks and balances and there's nothing violation in that. Is there any other part of the public hearing so that we can conclude and get to the commissioners' questions? Anybody else for the public hearing? Going once, public hearing, yes?
Hold on Chairman.
Abel Martinez, one oh five Hibiscus, just a real couple of real quick comments. Mr. Chairman, I did hear your concerns about small government and medium government. I think this is one where if you wanted to put it in that in that kind of quorum or that quadrant, I would say that this is small government or maybe maybe medium government.
You didn't hear the presentation just before you
About a certain area. It's very limited. It is a part of the history of Castle Hills. It makes it very unique. So I would say that I think and when you consider the fact that you have over fifty percent of the residents in this area supporting it. I think that addresses some of the concerns that we heard on the minimum lot size. So we've got a core, we've got a majority of the residents in the area support it. I believe this to be small government, maybe medium government, so I don't see it overreaching. And then I would also say that when you do a rural district, I think it takes away some of the intricacies and issues you have when you try to create minimum lot sizes for the entire city. And so and when you when you create a rural district, it really impacts a small area of the city and it is not something that's very global or very broad or in my opinion would constitute large government. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody on our virtual call along with myself that would like to speak references issue? Marcus taught me well to cover everybody in the chamber as well as virtually. Going once, going twice. I close the hearing? Oh, yes, sir.
Yeah, Stephen Ackley, one eighteen West Castle Lane, I am on the
Yes, sir, on the list.
But I'd just like to on the group presentation, I'd just like to make one comment in reference to the chairman's comment about small government versus big government. But you know, the comment was previously made that, well, we have a a lot size requirement of point five seven because the county won't allow us to put a house on there with a septic tank. I think that's a fine example of big government telling small government what to do. And I think that we should have our own regulations in this particular respect because in future, we don't know what's going to happen in terms of advanced techniques for sewage disposal or anything, which might require less land than than is there. And then we would be in a situation where the big government of the county says, well, we're not going to we're going to eliminate our regulation about having that point five seven acres. So I think it's it's tantamount to to us being able to control our own destiny by limiting a lot size relative to the one acre of with the stipulation of grandfathering of the previous lot sizes in order to prevent big government from telling us what to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. I appreciate you. At this point, anybody on the virtual call or in the audience would like to throw in a couple of more words before I close the public hearing? Going once, going twice, seven fifty-eight, I will close the public hearing and I'll go straight to our city attorney, Mark. The floor is yours.
Mr. Chairman, if you'll open the next agenda item because my comments about agenda item number five.
No problem, sir. We'll go to item number five, discussion of possible action on whether to recommend to the city council amendments to the zoning ordinance to create a rural RR rural residential zoning district to include the use, building area, height, area, construction material, fencing, vehicle parking and storage and other regulations for an RR residential district.
Thank you. Members of the commission, I just want to kind of make this observation for you. A couple of things, although we've heard a lot of people tonight during both public hearings speak persuasively about the importance of a rural residential district in the area west of West Avenue. That's not what you are going to be deciding this evening. This evening, your decision is whether to recommend the creation of an RR district, not what's going to be rezoned RR. Can't rezone it until the district exists. So the resolution that Mr. Rapley circulated in the packet includes a resident, a resolution where the zoning commission, if it so chooses, would recommend to the council that the zoning ordinance of the city of Castle Hills be amended to create the RR rural residential district and include the use, building area, height, area, construction material, fencing, vehicle parking and storage and other regulations for that RR rural residential district as set out in Exhibit A. So I would encourage you to discuss whether as a group you are comfortable making a recommendation about the creation of the rural residential district. And also, if you are, then look at the three or four pages of the proposed language for and use regulations in the RR rural residential district. These were taken primarily from the use and other types of area, construction material, parking and storage. Those provisions for the most part, but not entirely and not exactly, were taken from the rules for the single-family A district. The main differences are in the rural residential district. There is a requirement that the front yard have a minimum depth of fifty feet or twenty percent of the depth of the lot. And that the minimum lot area be not less than forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet, which is one acre. In light of the discussion that you heard, the comments you heard during the public hearings, you know, I think it would be useful to consider whether the minimum lot area in even a new RR district should be one acre or something else that I ask you all to just consider that. And also in terms of the special uses, those are the uses in the RR district. Similarly to much of this draft regulation comes from the A district. So you may want to look and perhaps someone will want to modify what might be allowed in the rural residential district in view of the comments that Mr. Baker and others made this evening. So I don't want you all to feel that just because it's in this draft, and that's why it says draft, it's not final. It's not final until you all make it final or make it part of your recommendation.
This was gonna be my, this was, thank you. This was gonna be my direction to this to to this commission was that we first make the decision, yes or no, to make the recommendation amongst today's meeting, right? But we don't take a formal vote on it till the December, till January the fifth. And the reason I asked for that is because precisely what Mark just realized, I mean, relayed to us are the nuances that are underneath the the full recommendation. If we intend to be able to move forward with the recommendation of RR district, this was the gist for me to be able to make my decision. Then in the next meeting, it gives us enough time to review everything Mark just outlined. We, quite frankly, because of my direction over the last two public hearings, we're really just looking at whether to do it rural district or not. And so there's a lot more, much like many of the icebergs, right? It's the lower half that we have to then consider. So my hope was to have a really good rigorous discussion now, see the lay of the organization of this commission. If it's so that we're going to make the recommendation for one, then we have the due diligence to do additional work and improve it officially with all the nuances and details that Mark applied and talked about in our next meeting in January. We are way ahead of schedule. We promised to be done before the city council elections of next year. We're ahead of schedule. We're having two public hearings, which is why we rushed one today to make it a viable opportunity for people to discuss. But I don't know if this commission is ready to go into all the detail that Mark just went after because to me, it starts off with us first making the decision and feeling like a consensus. We don't have to take a vote because we can't. We can if we wanted to, but because of the nuances that Mark just outlined for us, that's what I'd like to recommend to this commission, that we 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 make a consensus to move forward, keep it on our agenda for the next January fifth meeting, at which point we will then go point by point with the with the nuances that are below the surface of the actual recommendation. I I believe that is a good studious and responsible and transparent way for us to proceed with this item. Your thoughts, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I have some issue with that. For one thing, if we vote to proceed with making a recommendation and then decide what that recommendation is going to be later on in the next council meeting, our next commission meeting, after additional discussion, we'll be voting tonight on who knows what.
No, sir.
What we need to do, it seems to me, is to postpone a vote until we know what we're going to be voting on. I don't think we can vote on this tonight because as Mr. Schnall and Mr. Solis had pointed out, there are a whole bunch of things. There are some things I'd like to mention.
Okay. You are correct. I want to hear your thoughts tonight. And what I'm saying is that we're correct, Skip, that I want to hear your comments tonight because they will be influential to what we have to officially vote on on January fifth. Walter, you had some thoughts?
I think, okay. I'm no, I'll save for a few minutes.
Okay, well, let me go first. First of all, I appreciate the presentation that was today to me today. It's amazing to me. You all know I'm a former city councilman for the city of San Antonio. And I represented District Five. And when I heard no sewer, no drainage, no streets, no sidewalks, hell, I fought every day to get that for my constituency in the city. So it's amazing to me to sit here and listen to a group of citizens say, I want the status quo. Unacceptable to me. I thought it was quite ingenious that you sit here where people across the city are fighting for the very things against having no drainage, against having small streets, against having no sidewalks, against having flooding. And yet you're telling us, I want the status quo. I have difficulty accepting that when for years I fought so hard against such things for taxpayers. As taxpayers, you deserve better, at least so I think. So it's unique for me to hear such arguments that I have never heard like that before. Now, as I get my blood pressure down, I think in terms of the fact that there was something done in nineteen ninety seven. So I understand that. But I have a question for Mr. Martinez. Mr. Martinez, come forward for a second. You, my friend, are new to the district. And when you think about progress, you think about the future. Tell me, sir, how you see the future being without any drainage, without any streets, without any sidewalks? For your children, you talked, I believe it was one of your other neighbors that talked about their daughters learning how to drive. And yet you're not asking for a better-looking street. You're not asking for wider streets or sidewalks. You're asking for the status quo. Please help me understand why I would have the acceptance of the status quo when everybody fights tooth and nails for streets and drainage and no flooding. Mr. Martinez, can you speak to that?
I can. I grew up in a little bitty city called San Benito, the poorest city in the state of Texas.
I know exactly where it's at.
Drainage, down in the valley. I didn't have drainage. I didn't have sidewalks and narrow streets. And the reason why we had flooding and the reason why we had accidents in that area is exactly the same thing I'm proposing today. Because the muscles you put on each of these lots and the smaller you make these lots, there's going to be substantial need for better streets, curbs, sidewalks, better stop signs, better stoplights. You're talking almost better stop signs, better stoplights. You're talking almost an entire infrastructure for one neighborhood. So it is completely different. And I understand, Mr. Chair, that you were in, in city council. I remember you well. You handled government affairs for HEB. So I, I do know what you fought for and, and I applaud you for it. But in, in District Five, it is desperately needed. In our area, because of the lot sizes, because of the low level of traffic, we can do without it and we're just fine if we can maintain the status quo. If we cannot maintain the status quo, then you're looking at another District Five. We are going to need better sewage, better drainage, better traffic, better stop signs, better stoplights, curbs, wider streets, and a heck of a lot more. And if, I assure you, that if a rural district is not created, we're all going to be back here asking for each one of those things. Because there's absolutely no way you can maintain the current status quo and not invest a substantial amount of infrastructure dollars in this neighborhood. And I also will remind the commission that if somebody doesn't agree with this, there is always the opportunity for a variance. So it's not something that can't be looked at if the variance committee or the zoning commission does, feels that it is extremely important and very significant that a variance be granted.
I appreciate you. Thank you so much for the response. Mr. Baker, can you come forward for a second? Help me understand, Mr. Baker, why the work that was done in nineteen ninety-seven isn't sufficient for what you're asking for today?
Because it wasn't codified.
Mean put into paper and into ordinances?
That's correct. There was never, it was, and we've been here many times and in front of city council where we brought this up. And a number of the council members questioned that it was ever put into play, even though it was voted on. And it never made it into ordinances like this rural district that really conveyed the intent and had any teeth. So it was never carried forward in a way that we've never seen council or zoning commission say they had an ordinance to act upon. That's what we need. That's what we're asking you for. And I will point out, going to the, the last question, that in terms of the infrastructure we're talking about, remember, this is a rural area. We shouldn't treat it like an urban area. We're trying to mix two concepts together here. As long as it is maintained as a rural area, it is fine. And it would save the city a hell of a lot of heartache and investment to try to convert it into an urban area. So let's please remember, the request is appropriate. Call it a rural residential area because that fits its character and the work, and the neighborhood is successful in that character. Hope that answers your question.
It does. I have one more follow-up. Then you had also identified that presently the flooding that takes place between, between Antonian and Aggie Park still exists as it is today. So there is a flooding problem today.
There is indeed. There already is a flooding problem that it's, it's waters that come from Zone One as well as waters that come under West Avenue and converge right there at Antonian and then all flood go downstream behind Aggie Park. Okay, so there's a convergence of flow fields right into that area. Development Zone One would pile on top of that already existing flow. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir. I appreciate you.
Okay, good deal.
Commissioners?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Skip McCormick. There's several things that need to be addressed. I appreciate Ms. Baker addressing the question of fifty dash three ninety-one as proposed in the draft. There are problems with, with that way that it's set up. Right now, there is a, a chapter in the existing zoning code, Chapter Fifty Dash Four Ninety Seven, which is written in such a way that it would also apply to any newly created district. And the, the problems that were raised originally about the schools and, and churches and whatnot developing in that area are not resolved by this proposed draft or, or about, nor are they immune from the provisions in Fifty Dash Four Ninety Seven, which would allow for special use permits for schools and churches and so forth, which doesn't do anything to solve their problem. So my thought is that, that, that the list of, of use regulations in three ninety, in, in Fifty Dash Three Ninety-One allows municipally owned buildings and structures, but that doesn't limit those buildings and structures to any type of, of use. And I would, I would add such a thing as except for places of assembly. In item one, non-commercial parks and schools and so forth, I would delete that one entirely. I would, in item three, or in item two, rather, I would say those are all fine as long as they're for the purpose of providing utility services to the city or businesses within the city. Delete item three altogether, electrical facilities, office built, and item line four, I'd say office building, storage facilities, and personnel assembly facilities would be excluded also. And in item five, I would delete altogether because first of all, we already have a substantial amount of nonprofit land in the city. Twenty-five percent of our land area is owned by nonprofits of one kind or another. And increasing that doesn't help. That takes up a million, two hundred thousand dollars of our property tax revenues every year, which we don't receive, and we still have to provide police and fire services. The garbage service and whatnot is covered by a fee added to the water service fee. And so that one is covered, but the other ones are not. And we're still providing those services at our cost and not getting a benefit. So increasing the number of nonprofit facilities in the city, I think is something we don't really want to do. Now, notwithstanding the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act, which appears to limit our ability to restrict these kinds of nonprofits, I think there is a way to do that that is not contrary to the code. And I think deleting this, this provision is a start. We also have to modify the provisions of Fifty Dash Four Ninety Seven so that they do not apply to any rural, rural area that we might designate in the future.
Thank you for those concerns, Commissioner. Are there any other commissioners to speak?
Walter Bueller. Once again, I, I guess to add on to, I guess, what we, what I or we, we'd all discovered last, in, in the last hearing, I, I don't believe they, they, I recognize that they would like to maintain the large lots that they, they, that are currently present in the proposed area. However, an acre does not seem to be able to be feasible in that it appeared on a prior slide that the, the average lot over there is not an acre. And you take off the setbacks off of it. And if, if, again, if, if a tornado were to come and, and lift one of these houses off, they're going to get, have to appear before the AR, ARB board to, to rebuild. And so need to adjust that down a bit. Perhaps the, the minimum lot that, that's over there so that, so that they don't have to come back. But, but an acre is not what they, they, what they really want.
Thank you, sir. Then let me suggest this. I will entertain a motion to place this agenda item for consideration, January fifth. But the concerns that you heard from our commissioners today, I would suggest that we get together with them to iron out what Commissioner McCormick has talked about and there, and some of the concerns so that we have a clean ordinance all the way through, allowing for us then if we decide to make the recommendation, it also addresses the commissioners. Yes, sir.
When you're finished with your statement, I have a recommendation because I don't think the, the action by the commission tonight should be to, to say have another meeting. I think the appropriate action might be to postpone action until the January fifth meeting so that it's consistent with the wording of the agenda item. And I didn't mean to interrupt you as I raised my hand rather than starting to talk.
I appreciate you. And, and so that would be my, my recommendation is we follow what Commissioner McCormick had said, postpone this item because there's still a little bit more due diligence for us to complete before we make a full recommendation, January fifteenth.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question too.
Yes, sir.
In looking at the draft, I see a lot width of a hundred feet. I see fifty-foot side setbacks. I'd like to know how we're going to put a house on a hundred-foot lot with fifty-foot side setbacks. I think that that maybe needs to be adjusted a little bit.
Absolutely. That'd be something else that we would put into the record to be adjusted and addressed before January the fifth.
The other thing that I think that you get into is what Mr. Bueller raised is with the one acre limit, you get the destruction of a, a house for whatever reason. I don't know that I would agree that you, as a homeowner, go through the review board to be able to rebuild. But I think he's hit some very good points on the uses. I don't know why you would want to have electrical facilities or natural gas handling and regulating stations in someplace like this. I agree with what he was suggesting that might be appropriate to consider on this.
Those are all the items that we definitely need to, to follow up and get our homework done between now and January the fifth. I believe all the commissioners, no, I'm missing one who has not spoken, but I'm looking forward to him saying something.
Chairman, I would like to say something. John Herndon?
Yes, sir.
A couple of weeks ago, we heard from a proposed development. And, and I'm, I'm typically, I've always been, been a little bit more pro-development and land rights than I am protectionism. And I looked at it and I looked at it from a sense of reasonableness. And, and that some of these proposals that, that you had on your list up there were obviously unreasonable to me. And they should have been, in my opinion, shot down immediately. And they shouldn't have taken so much effort on y'all's part over the years. So I can see your, your desire for some sort of protection. But I, I have read over the proposed guidelines and they do seem to be almost like a whole new set of code for the city of Castle Hills. And I have some questions, you know, that I'd like to know is which code would, which code would, would supersede and which would give way, questions like that of the city. I don't know. I mean, if I see some, there's some stuff about how tall a bush can be on a corner lot. You know, is that something that's in our code currently? And is if it is, is it, is it, is it uniform? So I think, I think in my opinion, that if we had to vote on it tonight, I wouldn't say that you need a special district. What I'd say is we need to look at this a little bit more, a little bit more in-depth and find out what parts of this are y'all really here for. Is it the lot size? Or is it the bush size? Or is it all of the above? And I think that there may be a simpler answer than, than setting up a whole district, but maybe not. I don't know. And so I am, I am in agreement with, let's, I'd like to postpone the vote or have more discussion on this at the next meeting.
I agree with Mr. Herndon.
I apologize. So we do have, so then I'll need a motion, gentlemen.
I believe Mr. Schnell had, has his hand up.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Walter. To, to respond to Mr. Herndon, virtually everything in that draft, three or four-page attachment to the proposed resolution that was on the website and in your packet comes directly from the current ordinance for the A single-family district. My sense was to present to the council regulations for a new rural residential district that address the primary concern that I heard and saw in written material and heard at public hearings, which was they want, the group of folks in that area wanted to have a minimum lot size substantially larger than the A district provided. That's why that change was made to forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet. And as Mr. Bueller said, that may not be the right number. And in fact, one of the speakers this evening, I think it was Ms. Athlee, also recognized that maybe an acre was not the right number, but maybe it was. What, what I would like, I wanted to certainly let Mr. Herndon know that this wasn't just, didn't come out of, out of, out of the, out of the air. It came from the existing single-family district regulations. I agree with Mr. McCormick that in conjunction with an adoption of a, of a rural residential district amendment to Fifty Dash Four Ninety Six, Four Ninety Seven would be appropriate. I think there's a way to do that and to protect the rural residential district. And I think that was a, a very appropriate observation. And with a little direction from this commission, just based on what I heard this evening, I'm certainly glad to modify and to, to address in a modification the, the items that Mr. McCormick mentioned, the items that Mr. Jackson mentioned, so that you'll have some of that work done in advance of your January fifth meeting. If that's the, the, the group's desire in order to move this forward on, on, at an appropriate rate, so.
Mr. Jackson, are you willing to make that motion so that we can go ahead, give our city attorney some opportunity to, to clarify and perhaps unify what we need to be able so we can make a more informed decision come January the fifth? I will entertain that motion.
Mr. Solis, it just needs a motion to postpone. I don't think you can take action on that, that way. The best action tonight is simply to postpone based on your recommendation, to, to postpone action on the recommendation until the January fifth meeting. And at that meeting, you'll have a, a modified, and I'll show it as a red line, modified regulations. I, I will probably reach out to Mr. Jackson and Mr. McCormick separately to make sure I got down in my notes all the changes they were suggesting.
Thank you. So I'll need a motion.
I'll make the motion here.
Thank you, sir. I'll need a second. Mr. Herndon?
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Discussion, discussing, see no discussion at this point? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. We will be seeing this item once again, January the fifth. At this point, we have completed our agenda, so I will accept the motion to adjourn. Thank you, sir. I'll need a second. Appreciate the second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Again, gentlemen, thank you all, commissioners and guests for being on this call. We thank you once again for this special meeting and we look forward to seeing you again, January the fifth. Thank you all. The meeting is.